Session.
Good morning, I am Khushbu Rupani and I will be your moderator for the day.
Good morning Khushbu, how are you?
I'm good ma'am, how have you been?
Ah, I'm good, I'm good. So, thank you for accepting and being the moderator for the session today. I'm coming live, I think after a very long time.
The pleasure is all mine.
Okay, so happy Women's Day to all beautiful ladies there. Though we had Women's Day on 8th and but yes, we are celebrating the entire month. And we are here today with a live session which is going to be a rolling session every month, every week, every Sunday for coming three months, that's what the plan is. And we will bring dignitaries from different backgrounds in our platform and we'll talk to them. So today to... So I thought to start with me first and I'm here in front of you all. Yes Khushbu, how was your Women's Day?
It was great ma'am. So I although I miss school because I was not there at school this time and I saw everyone celebrating, it was great but yeah couldn't do much but still it was fine. What did you do?
What did I do? Good question. So though it was a busy day for me, it was my college and lot of other things. But I took some time out, went for a good coffee and treated myself with a banana walnut muffin. So I took around 1000 calories extra that day but ठीक है, एक Women's Day के लिए इतना तो किया ही जा सकता है अपने लिए.
That's what I did yesterday. I went for a good coffee and a good dish from my favorite cafe, it's called La Uva Coffee. So that's that like I did not celebrate it on the Women's Day but yeah I did something for myself.
I mean, I I don't think so that we need to do it once in a year. I think all of us should make it a point that we treat ourselves with what we love doing every single day. So I think हम लोग की to-do list में हम नहीं होते हैं, लोग होते हैं, पति, बच्चा, साथ-सफर, घर, काम, office. So हमारी to-do list में सबसे पहले हमें अपना नाम लिखना चाहिए, that's what I I feel, yes.
True. Okay, so before we begin with, I have a little anecdote. It is often like as a society, we often collaborate or we collaborate success with fame. So every person who we feel is famous, we associate them with success, that okay, this person is successful. But what I feel is that there are lots of people who are common people but they are doing great in their lives. So and they can be inspirational for all of us. And since today is, today we are talking about women, women empowerment and women's esteem. So we have you with us today to talk about women empowerment, women esteem. Although like you are famous but not in a grand national level as of now, I'm sure you will be in the near future. But we have this tendency as a society that only the person who is there on the TV or only the person who is known, kudos to them, they are doing great in their life, they are inspiration, they are inspiration for all of us. But there are people who are common and people who are just like you and I but they are also doing something amazing in their lives. So if I talk about Deepika ma'am, all of ours favorite or most of ours favorite who are here today. So she is also doing something great, like she is educating somewhere around 2000 people, 2000 kids all over Rajasthan or all over Jaipur or even in Chakso. So but this is something not very much known even in Jaipur but she is doing great and she is an inspiration. Similarly, there are lots of people who are doing something exceptionally well. We don't know about what they are doing but they are doing great and they are succeeding in their lives. So the thing is that not just the people who are successful can be called as successful people. They are people who do small little things in their lives and they are also successful. So which brings me to my first question with you that how do you describe yourself apart from being the director of Dolphins High School? So most people, they know you as the director of Dolphins Group of Schools. But how do you see yourself, how would you describe yourself apart from this identity?
कभी-कभी मेरे दिल में खयाल आता है कि जैसे मुझको बनाया गया है तेरे लिए. Why did I sing? I apart from, I mean I can't distinguish between the two roles but I'll say I'm an artist. I believe myself to be an artist. I love singing, I love dance, I love swimming, I love painting, I love to draw. And I draw very little things and then I love to pass it to my loved ones. So that's the passion in me. So I would really call myself as an artist and and yes, I I I if I I I think I'm a craft man, craft woman you can say. So so yeah, I associate myself with my right brain which is all for creativity and I I feel creative and I breathe creativity. So that's that's who I am, creative. So I call myself an artist.
Okay, very well said. We can obviously see that you are a creative person. So a lot of, I'm sure a lot of creativity and a lot of creative mind goes behind building such a great organization. It and it makes me feel that creativity is something that comes from our childhood. We cannot be creative suddenly. Our childhood, our upbringing plays a very important role in making us who we are and what kind of a creative or a visionary or an innovative person you are. So I give a lot of credit to my father for being the kind of person I am, for the little qualities, good qualities that I've got. And so I'm sure there are lots of people and there is a lot of, there are lots of things that are there in your childhood as well. So if you could tell us about your childhood.
Yeah, so to be very honest, I give the entire credit for the creative side of me to my mom. So who I am as an artist is because of my mom and I think most of you know that I'm a single child. So very early, my mom realized that she has to be with me to fill that gap of not having a brother or a sister. So मेरी मम्मी मेरी दोस्त बनने और उन उस दोस्ती में उन्होंने मुझे हमेशा बिजी रखा और बिजी रखा in terms of, हमेशा कुछ ना कुछ नया करने की प्रेरणा देती रही वो. So मुझे आज भी याद है, मेरी हर summer break में she used to enroll me for X, Y, Z courses. So मैंने knitting करना, crocheting करना, कढ़ाई करना, बुनाई करना, खाना बनाना, painting करना, glass painting करना, nip painting करना, acrylic painting करना. और हम लोग, जब मैं बड़ी हो रही थी तो mashi, paper mashi was very like on top, so paper mashi करना. So I remember till the time I got married, every summer break or maybe a winter break for 10 days was supposed to be one part of any of these things. और कुछ भी नहीं तो वही बैठी करा देती थी because she was creative. तो तो हाँ, शायद वहां से मेरा creativity आया and and she never forced me to be excellent there. So I will not say that I'm master of you, I'm jack of all masters of none. So that's who I am. Yeah, so that's about my childhood. My mom, the credit goes to my mom who who just threw me out and she just wanted me to learn and and that's that's the creative part of me, yes, I learnt from her.
Okay, thank you. This makes me think that I'm sure there are lots of mother out there watching all of us. So and I'm sure there are lots of new moms as well. So any advice or any tip that you would want to give the mothers out there?
Yeah, I would say definitely all the mothers out there. Please, as in one of my parenting session, I talk about the right brain and the left brain. So most of you I think now know about how they both different and how it works. So it is as a mother, it is your responsibility to give exposure, that's what I feel is the parent's job. To give exposure to your child to different things and be there patiently for some time with the child. If the child will develop interest in it, he or she will stick to it. If not, give give him or her something else. So Khushbu कहीं बढ़ के होते हैं, हम लोग as a parent, हम obsessed होते हैं, obsessed होते हैं कि मेरे मेरे बेटे को painting आनी चाहिए, skate करना चाहिए, champion बनना है. So वो obsession से बाहर निकलो, सिर्फ exploration की तरफ जाओ, उसको जो करना होगा, वो निकल लेगा उसमें से. So so I want us, all of us to restrict and have a clear thought process and distinguish between obsession and exploration. So yes, obsession आ जाता है तो बच्चे तंग हो जाते हैं and then आप उससे ज्यादा तंग होते हो. ये class नहीं कर रहा है, मैं इसको रोज लेके जाती हूं and and blah blah blah, lot of other story. All of you know that.
Yeah, that's so true. Sometimes it just feels like even with the kids, if we talk about a kid, they feel like that okay, I am liking this thing but maybe after 10 days they won't like it. It's it's all about exploring. So yeah, that's something great, a great tip. So parents or the mothers or the both, both the parents should actually give their children some time and should accept that okay, ये नहीं हो रहा है, कुछ और कर सकते हैं.
There's so much now, हम लोगों के टाइम पे when I was growing up, it was only डॉक्टर बनोगे या इंजीनियर बनोगे but there is so much things in demand right now. Design thinking से लेकर AI तक, I think it's time for us to shift our thought process and give chance to every child to do what he or she wants to do.
Yeah, this just reminded me that day before yesterday, on the day of Mahashivratri, India had its first National Creators Award and a lot of YouTubers were given the credit and they were awarded by the Honorable Prime Minister. So I think that is the new next thing coming up, a new career or a job opportunity where people will be creating jobs for themselves. So I I think अब हमारे जमाने में बोला जाएगा YouTube पर बन जाओ instead of saying डॉक्टर या इंजीनियर बन जाओ.
True, very true. YouTube is the next big thing, yes.
Yeah, so let's move on to the next question. The big question, people talk, keep on talking about it, what is women empowerment according to you?
बहुत भारी शब्द है ये, woman empowerment. So I, I mean, I'm not going to talk on a global or national level, I am talking on my own level. The freedom for me to do what I want to do, when I want to do, in my own way. That's woman empowerment for me. मुझे आज खाना नहीं बनाना है. So I should be given a liberty to tell everybody, आज मैं खाना नहीं बना रही हूं, bread butter खा लेना. But again, it is my responsibility to make sure bread butter kitchen में है. If I have to feed everybody. So that's what I feel. Whenever I don't want to do anything, I should be in a position to say no and people around me should respect it and accept it. So that's a very simple definition, I think according to me.
Any anecdote, any anecdote from your real life or something that you have experienced in terms of these?
I mean, I think ये bread butter वाला example मैंने अपनी ही डाइव कर दिया है कि मुझे खाना बनाने का मन नहीं है. तो मैं बोल देती हूं कि मैंने खाना नहीं बनाया. But to to give you an example. I have a guest today and I made seven to eight items. And then वो seven to eight items बनाने के बाद I said, okay, I am free till tomorrow 24 hours. Because आप सात आठ item तो आज खत्म नहीं करोगे. So you take your time, finish whenever, whatever you likes, whatever you like it and then by tomorrow evening, I'll be ready to cook something else again for you. So so I think everybody is okay with it and if somebody is not okay with it, they have their own क्या बोलते हैं, they have their own freedom to make whatever they want and then I'll say, okay, have something for me, make something for me as well.
I think this is great because even today, not a lot of women in India have that privilege to say no to just a little thing of like making a meal for themselves or for the family. So I think that is great. So we are blessed with a great family.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next question, who are the people in your life? It can be both men and women who made you feel empowered?
I think the credit again goes to my family. So my husband. I have seen him respecting at every moment. I've seen my children, they do the same. They know, I mean, the bond with my younger one is such a way that if he he is able to see my face and he is able to see that I'm sad, I'm upset, I'm happy, I'm grumpy. I I mean, he can, I mean, that's what I feel. I always wanted a girl who can understand me. But I think God has given me boy who understands this. So I am complete. I have no grudges with life. And and yes, I have three boys in my life and when I was planning my second baby, I always wanted a girl. But yes, my younger one is the most sensitive among all of us. And and this is, this I got from my father, he was able to see my face and tell me. But his way of making me understand was different. Yes, and this, my son also is able to do this and his way of telling me is different. So I'll say all the men around me, like my father, my husband and my two kids.
That's really beautiful ma'am. It just makes me think that how your sons are. It totally reflects the kind of upbringing that you have given to them. So anything from your life, from your upbringing that you feel you did it right? Because it's beautiful and it's, I feel common even now, nowadays, it's not very common, sorry, that people or men around us, they are being able to understand women around them. It can also be their own mothers. But if you are sharing this this bond with your sons and your husband, so it is something very beautiful and also a little bit rare at the same time. So if you have to tell people or if somebody who is new, if they ask you that how did you do that? I'm sure you did something right that has done this or that has created this bond for you. So if you would like to put some light on it.
When you ask this, an incident flashed. So I would like to share an incident. We all talk about that all the ladies needs to be respected, all women needs protection. If something bad happens with any woman, it is on media. And I remember there was an, there was incidents quite some time back, Moksh was growing up and and I had a conversation with him. And हमारे लड़कों को लड़कियों की इज्जत करना हमें ही सिखाना है. So उनके पास भी दिल है और वो भी धड़कता है और उनको दुख होता है. ये हमें ही बताना है अपने बच्चों को. So I had a conversation with Moksh where I told that कभी भी किसी का दिल नहीं दुखाना और जिंदगी में कभी तुम्हारे सामने किसी लड़की की इज्जत पे बनाई या तुम्हें लगता है मुझे इसकी मदद करनी है, so उससे भागना मत. So you should be one person, उसको करते हुए तुम्हें कुछ भी हो जाएगा, I'm there with you. But I'll never be able to take you back, understanding that you did nothing where you could have done something. So and I'm talking about very long Khushbu, Moksh was quite young, must be nine or eight, nine years. So and then as a mother, I always made them realize that be it your classmate, be it your friend, you don't have to cross that line and giving, what is consent? That's what we have to tell them. We can't go beyond somebody's consent. That's I told him and initially I still remember there was one more conversation we had as a family when Moksh was coming here to New Zealand where I made him understand because I know he's going in an open environment. So he needs to know what are his limits and and I gave him freedom to do what he wants to do but he should know what he is doing and why he is doing. So I think हमारे ऊपर ही जिम्मेदारी है, अगर हम एक अच्छी सोसाइटी बनाना चाहते हैं और जहां पे हमें लगता है कि equality चाहिए, तो वो equality कैसी होनी चाहिए, वो हमें अपने बच्चों को बताना पड़ता है. और वो देख के सीखते हैं, हमारे घरों में देखते हैं वो. अगर differences हैं, लड़के के upbringing में और लड़की के upbringing में, तो वो दिख जाता है. So so it is as a society, we have this responsibility to prepare men or boys to respect everybody. No, don't, why, why we say respect only girls, everybody? Respect is the bare minimum thing, we can give it to anybody, we should always.
And to ourselves as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this was all about knowing Deepika ma'am as a person, as a human being, as a woman, as a mother, as a wife. So now let's move on to the professional side of yours. So one thing I have always, I have always been curious about to ask you that and it is something like जब भी हम बच्चे होते हैं, तो हमसे पूछा जाता है कि क्या करोगे बड़े होके, क्या बनोगे बड़े होके? So I remember I had lots of things in my mind but then eventually I knew that I am going to be a teacher. So did you always think as a kid that whatever you are doing right now, you are going to do that? And which also, which also like the point that I want to clear over here or the point I want to make over here with the help of you is that a lot of times as kids or as parents, we ask our children के बड़े होके क्या बनोगे? और हम उसी के according पढ़ाई करते हैं. So I always wanted to be a professor or a lecturer in commerce. But eventually I ended up becoming a teacher of English and I love it. So I think life happens and it's not important that whatever we are doing, whatever we are preparing for, maybe it is or whatever we are planning, since we are bigger planners. So however we are planning, it will move on like that only. And it happens with a lot of kids and parents के हम बहुत बार plan बनाते हैं but maybe they don't turn out the same as we did. So did your plans turn out the same way that you had thought of as a kid?
Okay, so I could see there are two questions and before I answer this question, I would like all the viewers also to put up their question because Khushbu will take up your questions as well. So if you have anything to ask from me, it's your time today. You can ask, I'm open for any questions, private, personal, whatever you want me to know, we to talk about. So you can put it on a chat box and now it's time for Khushbu's question to be answered. Okay, so first is, no, I never thought of that I am going to do what I'm doing right now. When I was a kid, it was always with me that I wanted to fly plane. So I wanted to become a pilot. So as it all happens with everybody, with time, things change and we we move from one thing, we like a monkey's jump from one place to another and then we we think. But yes, somewhere unconsciously, consciously, I still remember few memories where I used to teach invisible kids. So I used to, I mean, I role play myself as a teacher and then I used to teach, pretend that there are few students sitting in front of me and I'm teaching them. And I I I did play lot of times this role play. So so now when I teach and I love teaching, so so I I can resonate with it that yes, somewhere unconsciously, I always wanted to teach and then I'm doing that with lot of trainings I do. And I still, I I hold to myself a saying from Steve Jobs that whatever happens in life, it happens for a reason and and when we look back and we connect the dots, we will come to know why it all happened. And after hearing this, I also connected my dots and I am totally with his thought that yes, it so happened, there is somebody who has a plan for us and we, something not happening, the way we wanted, is for a bigger goal. So so I started believing in surrendering that as you said, we have lot of bigger plans, we are planners. But there is always a big planner, the God Almighty who is sitting somewhere up and creating things for us. So so it's a journey from you planning to him planning. So I have gone through that journey. So right now I am, okay, you plan, I'm following.
True. I think it's the most cliched thing to say that our plans don't work. It's the Almighty or gods or universe plans that work. But I also feel that cliches are cliched because they are true.
Yes, I also support that.
Okay, so we have a wonderful question for you from Divya Sharma ma'am. You just ask them to give the questions and here are the questions. आपको पहले बोलना चाहिए था.
Okay.
So how do we go about breaking down barriers that hold women back from discriminatory laws to an unfair share of home and family care?
How do we go about breaking down barriers that hold women back? I think I I answered this earlier with the saying that you just be you. Like if you don't want to work today, take a day off. If you, you don't need anybody else. I mean, power is not out there. This in woman empowerment, you need to hold your power with you yourself. So you don't need anybody to to tell you to do this, not do this, no. You have to take that power back from everybody from your life. You have to start taking decision and you have to start taking stand for yourself. I think a woman empowerment is more about you taking stand for yourself. It's been years, हम अबला की तरफ behave करते हैं, कोई आएगा राम, हमें बचाएगा रावन से, why? Be your own Ram and save yourself. You don't need anybody. God has created like this. We don't need anybody for our happiness. He is inside, look inside and get it. So I think ये बहुत बड़े word है, दुनिया क्या कर रही है, कैसे कर रही है? It's it's taking that power in your hand and taking responsibility. Your life is mess because of you, not because of somebody else. So the day you take this responsibility, you are done. And and it is easy Khushbu to shed responsibility. My life is mess because I don't have work. My life is mess because my husband is like this. My life is, if it is because of somebody else, you will never have power. The day you start taking responsibility, all the power comes to your hand and you say, my life is mess because of me. Now I'll stand and change it. I'll not listen to anybody or I will listen to myself. It's not out there, it's inside. Start listening. आपको थोड़ा सा और 15 मिनट सोना है, सो जाओ ना परंग पे. So सांस थोड़ा सा नाराज हो जाएगी, तो प्यार से बढ़िया गर्म चाय पिला देना, मम्मी थोड़ा सा उठने का मन नहीं कर रहा था आज. So manao or apni manvao, that's what I feel.
Okay, so we have a new mantra, manao or apni manao.
Manao or apni manvao.
Manao or apni manvao, okay, great. So okay, so we have our next question and it's an advice that you would want to give to the people. So, we have our next question and, um, it's an advice that you would want to give to the people. Okay, we have got the question on the screen al, already. I will just read out the question for you.
Okay.
Um, good morning ma'am. My question is, what are the effective ways to counteract the negative stereotypes? Uh, feminism, especially in the workplace?
Um, I think it starts from respecting everybody. So, don't talk about, uh, feminism or discrimination or gender thing. So, it's, it's a give and take, two way. So, in workplace, what we have to do only is. Respect the woman with whom you are working. So, I mean, take that negativity, stereotypical things out of your life. And just respect the human being with whom you are working. That's my mantra, yes.
I think that.
Because you also work.
I totally, uh, second you ma'am. Uh, I feel that, um, the word feminism is a lot misjudged. It is not about, uh, creating again a gender disparity. So, patriarchy was putting men on a pedestal and putting women down. I feel that the true feminism is putting both the people, both the genders at an equal stance. And the negative feminism or the stereotypical feminism or the pseudo feminism, it comes. Uh, both from women and men's side. So, I feel that feminism word is a really misjudged word these days. The only thing that we need to keep in mind is that there is no men and women, they're people, they're human.
Uh, bought beautiful photo aaya tha mujhe Mahashivratri ke din and again Mahashivrati was the fall on eighth March. So, I think bahut sara circulate hua tha, jisme Shiva, Shakti, dono saath me chal rahe the, and that's what. It is Shiva and Shakti together, that's make the Almighty. Without Shiva, Shakti is nothing, without Shakti, Shiva is nothing. So, that's one thing and another, I still remember Jagdish told me a story about Ram Sita. So, on the very first night, when Ram entered, Sita touched Ram's feet. To Sita Mata ne Ram ke charan chhue. To Ram ne in response, Sita ke charan chhue. And Sita was, why you are doing it? He said, if you do this to me, I can do this to you because we are equals. And that sets the tone, what we discuss. Shakti ke bina Shiva nahin, Shiva ke bina Shakti nahin.
Exactly. So, we should, I think it's high time, uh, both men and women should start looking at each other as, uh, humans. Kyunki agar Bhagwan, Adi or Shakti ke bina pure nahi hai, toh insan kaise honge? Ram or Sita ko agar hum detach nahi kar sakte, hum Bhagwan ko detach nahi kar sakte, toh hum toh fir bhi humans hai. And we should now start looking at each other as humans. And we should stop generalizing, ke saare aadmi aise hotay hain, saari aorte aisi hoti hai. Toh I think agar hum ye saare aadmi aise hotay hain, saari aorte aisi hoti hai, ye hi baat bola bandh kar di. Toh a lot of this disparity and a lot of this, uh, war of feminism. This and war of patriarchy, it will just get over. And I think we are the generation who can bring about the change.
Very beautiful question we have from Pooja.
So, I will just read out the question for our viewers as well. My question is, what was the biggest dream of your life when you were unmarried? And how did you fulfill that dream after married life?
Okay, so I'll share two things. Uh, very deep down inside, I always wanted to work in a corporate culture. Or equal with men. But my father never allowed me to work. So, that's before marriage. So, I, so somewhere deep down, I wanted to work and, and that got, I got it. Just after my married, marriage, married, I mean, after my marriage, I was working with my husband. So, so that's it. And if something which I can resonate right now. So, I always wanted to do my MBA from a foreign university. That was my dream. Uh, I did not have even guts that time to tell this to my father. But yes, now I'm fulfilling this at the age of forty-three. That old dream of twenties and I'm doing my masters in a foreign university.
Okay. So, I, speaking of New Zealand, I had a question in my mind. Uh, and I wanted to ask you that, uh, how is it studying again? At, as you said, at the age of forty-three, going back to college? So, how does it feel going back to college? Uh, because I am sure there are lots of people who still want, who somewhere want to, uh, study again, who want to pursue a master's degree. Or like I talk about myself, I am, I also want to do a PhD. But then I am skeptical because when you get into the professional world. It is, and when you, I would say, when you start earning the money. So, it becomes a slightly difficult or it just comes as a barrier for you, for any person, I feel. And I, I'm sure a lot of people will agree with me or would second with me. That, uh, it becomes difficult and little bit challenging, I don't know why. That it is difficult to get back to education, hume lagta hai ye nahi hoga, shaad humse, ya hum kaise karenge, ya time kaise nikal payega.
So, this is the answer. I mean, when I go to my college, I'm like this. So, have you seen movie Three Years? Usme jab Ranchordha, Chachar class me padta hai, toh ek dialogue aata hai kahi pe, ki. Usko koi teacher class se nikal deta tha, toh woh kisi dusre class me chala jata tha, aur vah bate ke par leta tha, toh he was open to learning. Whatever was coming his way, he was open to learning. So, when I roam around the college. I also feel like, acha is class me padhai ho rhi hai, meri toh hogi, main is class me bhar chadhiu, iska bhi kuchh parle thiu. So, yes, uh, to answer this, uh, I. I realized twenty fourteen that my life is stagnant and I'm not going anywhere. And I was very depressed at twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen. And I did not know what to do, how to do. And that was a moment of realization for me where I found out that I'm not learning anything new. And that's why I'm stagnant. And jaise bolte hain na, apne culture me ki. Paani ek jake rakhoge toh woh badbu marne lagta hai, except ganga jal. So, so mujhe lag raha tha, ki meri life is thinking. And paani behata bada. So, I wanted learning to flow and that is the year started. Twenty fourteen, I did my woman's empower, uh, woman's management program from SPGen. And then I, after that, I never stopped. I completed my BA last year only. So, so every year I take one degree and if you see my CV, so it's quite heavy now. And I, after coming here and having a talk with my professor, somewhere in my mind, they are making me do PhD as well after this. So, I'm thinking to add a DR after, before my CA, uh, but it will, all time will say. But yes, uh, that's my advice to everybody. Keep learning, have a growth mindset, a learning attitude. And, and aajkal toh aap logon ke liye bahut easy hai, even there are so many courses online. Big universities offer courses free of cost as well. It only takes your time and, and your intention. So, if you are intend, if your intentions are for learning, you can do that. I'm enjoying, I simply love learning. I'm open.
That brings me to the next question. Uh, since I work with you, I know you have a really busy and a hectic schedule. So, what keeps you going? Because yesterday only I had a mental breakdown. I felt I was being overworked. I felt I'm working for three people. And then I, like, it came to my mind while I was coming back to my home. Ke, yaar tipika ma'am, itna sara kam kaise karte hain ek saath? This was like the question that I really had in my mind while I was driving back to home. While I was mentally breaking down, ke ye kya hor raha hai mere saath? So, what keeps you going? What keeps you motivated? And I feel that a lot of women, not just women, a lot of people at. Certain point of time in their lives, they feel that they're overworked, they're overburdened. And, uh, they just feel like giving up everything or they just have a mental breakdown. So, what keeps you sane?
Uh, in one of my program, uh, webinar or seminar, something, I think way back. Eight to nine years, uh, the, the speaker told us to, to draw, hmm, uh. Do draw on paper what all we, what all in a day we do. So, I think it was a principal seminar and I was representing my school, though I was not principal. I was a from, I mean, director. So, so I draw, I drew Shakti, I mean, Durga Mata with lot of hands. So, ek hat me kanchula hai, ek hat me pen hai, ek hat me paper hai, ek ka de, ek hat me bacha hai. So, I, I drew that. And I have always that thing in my mind, that, okay. This is all, this all belongs to me and I'm capable enough to do it. And the tip here is time management. So, I keep a block of half an hour to one hour. And then start doing things from there. To start for little things. So, if you start from little things, lot of little things make big thing for you. Okay, we have a next question. I can, can I question it again? Can you share a story of woman who has inspired or influenced you and how has that impacted shape your own journey? Okay, uh, so I think Khujbu has lost her connection, so we'll wait for her to come, but I'll answer this question, iti for you. So, the special woman in my life, who is an inspiration, is my mom. So, my mom is somebody. From whom I have learnt making relationship. So, I've seen, woh kisi bhi anjane aadmi se, aurat se chalte chalte baat kar leti hai. Aur baat aise karte hai, ki usme pyaar tapakta tha. Meri mummy se koi ek bar mil le, woh meri mummy ko bol nahi sakta. So, I mean, she is an inspiration. She has never shouted on me. Forget about, unhone mujhe jhaaru mara tha, jab main par nahi thi, chhoti thi, but she never shouted. She accepted me the way I am. She never, she never made me realize that there's something missing in my life. And she was always an encouragement. Unka wo ek statement. Ki, don't worry, tumara exam acha hoga. Gives, has given me power always before writing my exam. Unki baato me aisa bharaasa hota tha, ki apnea bhi kar leti thi woh. So, so I miss her a lot. But I live her. Aaj bhi main apne pas kuch na kuch aisa rakhti hu, jo mujhe unki yaad dilata hai. So, every day, unka chota sa purse, unki shawl, it's all with me. And, and I make sure that main jisse bhi milu, apni mummy ke jaisi thodi si chhaap chhod do. So, that's what. So, it's my mom. She was amazing. She is amazing. Yes, welcome back Khushbu. I think aapka network gaya ho gaya tha. Are you there?
Yes, ma'am, I'm so sorry for, uh, there was some network issue from my end. Am I?
Yeah, you are audible, you are audible. So, we have a next question on the board, which talks about the changes. Uh, menopause brings on a woman's life. Uh, see, abhi mera toh aaya nahi, so I don't have much things about it, but what I have read, jo main padti hu. Usse mujhe ye samajh me aata hai, ki. Except yourself, that's again, comes down to the core. It is part of life, it will happen. And love yourself, be there for yourself. And don't expect people to understand you. First of all, you understand yourself. So, read some blogs, understand what is the process. Uh, how will your mood swings happen? And it's a journey and it is different for everybody. So, your knowledge, jaise aapne koi blog padha, koi article padha, koi video dekha, YouTube is full of videos. Jankari aap vah se le sakte hain. Aur main podcast sunti hu, maine recently a podcast, Menopause pe suna tha. And, and then you seek support. We should be each other's support. Your friend, your sister, bhabhi, devrani, jithani, jo bhi us chee se gudar chuka hai, hum unse baat kar sakte hain. Aur hum jankari le sakte, ki humare process ko hum kaise easy kar sakte. So, learning or understanding the process will bring things down for you. Chote chote pieces me break kar denge and then you can just go through it. And involve people around you, like your husband, your kids. Make them understand that, okay, agar main thoda sa awkward behave karo, so I'm going through this phase, bear with me. So, you have to take support from your people around and tell them, they will support you.
Okay, I think that is, I think that is one of the very important things. Uh, women have a tendency of suffering on their own and not sharing and not telling what they're feeling. And people just keep on thinking that, why is she sulking? So, I think that it is a very important thing to have a very open, uh, and a very. Uh, frank conversation with people around you, with especially the men around you because then again. It is there that it comes from, ke saadi aorte aisi hoti hai. So, because there is a lack of education and there is a lack of awareness, they don't understand why. Uh, a women, I, or why a woman, if someday is not being herself or if there is a problem going on. Or if she is being irritated or if she is overreacting, then maybe something is going on inside the body or inside the head. So, people should talk about it. It's very important.
Yes, we should give the space and then we have to ask for the space, basically. It's not like, koi anteryami hai, like my husband used to say, main anteryami nahi hu, tumhe batana padega, tumhe kya chahiye? So, so it's all lot of purpose. And I think we always think. Ki saamne wale ko pata chal jayega, reh, kaise pata chal jayega bhai, jaadu ki jhadi thodi hai, jo ghuma do, and sub pata chal jayega. You have to speak, that is why God has given you mouth to talk about your feelings.
So, let me read the next question. What are some ways to encourage married women to speak up about what they want without feeling guilty?
Hmm, I think guilt is a very important portion of our life. We are not able to cook food, we are guilty. We said something unintentionally, we are guilty. We, we had a fight, we are guilty. So, ek paper lo, uspe leko guilt aur usko jala do, thik hai? And then, it's not about being guilty, it is about being yourself. And then involve people around your life to know you, to value you. If you don't value yourself, Khushbu, nobody will. So, start from yourself. And it's about encouraging, I don't want you to, I don't want to encourage anybody, no, 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 I'm not here for any encouragement. I'm here to share my life and I want you to stand up for yourself. Mujhe time lag gaya, dhire 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 dhire, apne pairon pe khadi hui, aur samajh me aaya, main kon hu. So, ye aap sabki jarni hai. Koi jaldi samajh jata hai, koi late samjhta hai. Iska ye matlab nahi hai, ki main aapko bol rhi hu, me time me selfish ho jao, no? I take care of everything, I'm available for my people, every time twenty-four by seven and I know they are available for me twenty-four by seven. Beat my people, my teachers, my management, my family, my brother. I mean, anybody, I, I count on my people because I know I'm there for them and they are there for me. So, paper me guilt laga ke jala do, ye bhi acha nuska hai.
Okay, you taught, you just spoke a word, me time, a very important, uh, thing in every person's life, me time. So, uh, I think that a lot of people don't know the concept of me time. So, would you like to put some light on me time? Especially women, they don't know this word me time. So, would you like to tell, would you like to explain what is me time?
On and on with me time, that's my favorite topic.
And what do you do for your me times?
So, me time is that time when you are doing what you want to do. And that, to know what you want to do, you need to know yourself. Spend time with yourself, the most beautiful woman. I think this is the topic I floated on YouTube the other day. So, spend time with yourself. You go on date with your husband, your boyfriend. Go on date with yourself. What is a blind date with yourself? If you love reading, pick up a book. If you love reading, pick up a book. Go to a cafe. Buy coffee for yourself and have it. If you like Golgappa, now you have all the privilege to go out and have Golgappa, I don't have this. So, so go out and have Golgappa from that thadi, jahan se aapka pati aapko nahi khilata hai, par aapko pasand hai. Aur aap nahi khati hu, kyuvi vo nahi khata hai. So kisne mana kiya hai, aap khao na jaake. So it's, it's all about me time is what you all, uh what you want to pamper yourself. You can go for spa. I know my sister, she go for hair wash, it's her me time. So there is no definition about it. It is as simple as you making tea for yourself and having parleji and tea. Just sitting and doing nothing and having tea, main yeh nahi bol rhi, bahar jao, pansur per kharch karo. You can sit inside your house and do it. If you want to watch a YouTube video or anything else, do it. If you want to take a shower after twelve o'clock, everybody has slept, do that. So you have to decide your me time and the agenda is you should feel happy. Doing it and after that. So that's for your happiness. And if you, if, if you like flowers, why you want your husband or your somebody to buy flowers for you? I buy flower for myself. Mujhe kisi ne flower nahi di aast tak, main khud apne flower khudi khariati hu.
I buy flowers for myself on Valentine's Day. Kyuvi fomo nahi hu na, thik hai?
Yeah, so you have to decide your me time and then live it. And, and obviously if you left your house work and then you do have your me time, your. House will go bonkers, I don't know, all the people in the family will start judging me, don't do that. But I have my me time and I give space to everybody in my family to have me time and I do my me time when my work is done. So when Khujhu talked about time management, that me time is also there, ab that me time can be once in a week. Can be daily, can be once in a month, can be once in a year. When you go for a solo trip for two days, main pushkar ja rhi hu, do din vah pe. Resort mein reh ke aoge, I mean, I mean it's, I don't know, but I have done that. So it depends in your family and your choices. So choose for yourself, what is your me time?
Yeah, I think that women, women are so ingrained and uh they have been told since childhood or since always. That you have to look after everyone. And they forget and people forget that they have, they also have to tell them that they have to look after themselves also. And that is the reason they just forget to spend time with themselves, which is very important. To pamper yourself, to take care of yourself, because I strongly feel that if we ourselves will respect our own time. If we will respect ourselves and if we will uh love ourselves, only then the world out there is going to respect and see ourselves. As how we see ourselves. So.
So you asked about my me time, right now my me time is one coffee a day. So I treat myself with a coffee, if I'm there in college, I'll buy that coffee and while working I'm doing it. Or as I said about this woman's day that I just. Had a muffin and a coffee with myself, so that was my me time.
Okay, great. Uh so we have the next question. How to control our anger or disappointment without affecting our life? So it will not be a barrier for our growth or how to handle it calmly?
How to control our anger and disappointment? There are two things, so I'll answer anger first. Jab aap apne aap ko janne lagoge na Khushbu, to aapko pata chal jayega ki abhi aap khush ho, abhi aapko guzzaar rahe. Aur gusse me hum, jab hum apne aap ko janne lagte to hume yeh bhi pata chalta hai ki hum gusse me kaise behave karte hain. To mujhe guzzaar tab aata hai jab mujhe bhuk lagi hoti hai aur I mean. Aga if I'm hungry, I'm angry. So, so I make sure that I'm not hungry. And I keep something with me so that us level pe main nahi pahunchu. And so you know, need to know yourself and then control or iske liye bhi koi aur nahi control karega, hume hi jimmeydaari uthani. And next is disappointment without affecting our life, so it will not be a barrier for our growth or how to handle it calmly. So if you wanted something in your life and it is not happening. I have learnt in last few years that, as I discussed earlier, that aapke haaton mein kuchh nahi hai. Hum sab katputli hai, I believe strongly. Hum sab katputli hai. So koi cheez jo main chahti hu, vo nahi ho rahi hai. To mujhe yeh bharaasa hai upper wale par ki vo jo kar raha hai, vo sahi kar raha hai. Vo hai my to know, bahut purani kahavat hai. Bin mangye moti mile, mangye mile na bhik. I don't know, Khushbu tumne suni hai ki nahi? So yeh mujhe aade, mene dada ji batate the and it, it is a life changer. Bin mangye moti mile, mangye mile na bhik, to aapko moti mil jayenge. Aapke nahi mangne se, agar aap bharaasa karte ho aur mangne se to bhik bhi nahi milte hai. So I learnt, like I'm blessed to have a grandfather, father. And people who loved me so much, I've gained a lot of wisdom from these people and I utilize it. So yes, so aap, kuchh acha nahi ho raha hai aapke life mein to, aap jimmeydaari kyu lete ho, bahut easy hai, upper wale pe chhod do. Ki bhi ya thik hai, aapne jo kiya, sab sahi kiya, ab, abhi samajh mein nahi a rahe, par samja dena, aage chalke, to vo samja bhi dete hai. So yeh bharaasa hai, bharaasa kar lo, uspe, upper wale pe, jisko bhi manate hu aap.
Okay, great. So we have a very important and a very good question coming up. Which is as the director of Dolphins Group of Schools, what are the changes that you are looking for?
Okay, hmm. See I have embraced the new education policy twenty twenty. I love the policy. And policy bahut choti si cheez, ek sentence mein bolte hai ki, char si, har bacha ke develop kar do. Creativity, critical thinking, communication, collaboration. Aage aane wale time mein AI kon kon se job le jayega, hume pata nahi hai. So apne bachon ko doctor or engineer na banao, kyuvi aapko pata nahi hai ki AI kon se job replace karega. Apne bachon ko yeh char skill agar hum de dehte hain, school mein, apne gharon mein. So we will ready the future generation. So I think that's the biggest change I'm looking forward to. Instead of content delivery, I want all the teachers to be a facilitator and develop. These four Cs from top to bottom. So that, as our mission or vision says, we create world leaders by making learning fun.
Uh speaking of leaders, what do you think makes a person a powerful leader?
Um. I think when you start taking care of people around you, you are a leader. Leader eats last. So agar aapne apne life mein, apne ajoo bajoo sabka dhyan de diya. Aap apne aap hi leader ban jao ge. So logon ko khyal rakhoge, to log aapka khyal rakhenge. So go ahead and I believe, I read a book, leaders. With leader, leader without title, I think from Robin Sharma. So one of the fine book, finest book I have read. So it talks about, aapko tag nahi chahiye, ek chota sa Pion. Bhi apna kam karte karte, apni leadership skill dekha sakta hai. Aur ek bahut bada CEO bhi responsibility na leke, bahut chota ban dekha sakta hai. So I value the Pion who is a leader in his job. So I think. Spiderman mein tha na, jo bahut hi famous dialogue hai. Responsibility comes with power.
With great responsibility, with great power comes great responsibility.
Ah so that's all about. Responsibility, you be responsible at every single step, what you're doing in life.
So we have the next question. Good morning ma'am, in my opinion, most of the time it's not the men who fail to understand us, but the women herself. Be it in form of mother-in-law, sister-in-law, colleagues, how do you suggest women to uplift each other?
I think Siddika has come late because I think the entire, we have discussed all this there. So Siddika, I will suggest you go back and read, I mean, listen to the entire conversation. The, the whole conversation is all about uplifting ourselves. Okay, so I think we have one more question and we are like, it's for me, it's six thirty. For you, it is eleven. So we are coming to an end of the session and we'll be here for next two, three minutes to take up anything else if we have. We have Deepika Kapoor ka question hai kahi pe, if that is there. We can take and I really thanks to all of you for being here. And I am grateful that you all came to watch this video. And we'll have a guest next week and I want the same support from all of you. Yeah, we go ahead with Deepika Kapoor's question.
I'll just read it for everyone. Uh what to do when you feel that what you are doing is for everyone? Yet those for whom you are doing it feel that what have you done? Karai kya hai apne?
Okay, so I'll close the entire session. Just bringing one thought, where from I started. Don't do things for others, do it for yourself. If you're cooking food, you are cooking for yourself. If you are going out for work, you are doing it for yourself. If you are giving time to your children, your husband, your mother-in-law, father-in-law, you're doing it for yourself. The day you stop looking forward to confirmations. Tick marks, checklist from outside, you will be able to live your life the way you want. So is question me, we agar Khushbu aap dekho, to we need some approval from outside. So why? Let's live ourselves. Let's approve ourselves first. Why we need approval from outside? Acknowledge yourself that you did things. Why you want somebody else to say you have done? No, take this and say I've done this. Congratulations. Be a friend, be there, you don't need anybody to support you. You are complete. God has made you complete. Recognize that and live that.
Yeah, this is so true. As human beings, we have this tendency of always looking for validations. So I think vo jo baat kahi jati hai, be selfless and do not have any expectations. I think if we start inculcating that in our lives, it just sheds a lot of load, a lot of load on our hearts. So this is something that I also practice. If I'm being friend with someone or if I'm doing, if I'm helping someone, I help it, I help them because I feel good about it. Not because they are going to help me back. So I think I learned it very early in my life that agar aap kisi ke liye kuchh kar raha hu. Don't think aap unke liye kar raha hu, ya aap apne liye kar raha hu, because you like helping other people. So never expect anything in return and I think that just makes you feel a little, little bit more happier personally.
Yeah. Do it for yourself.
Stop looking for validations, yeah.
True, true. So thank you Khushbu for such an amazing session today. I, I can see people are happy to see this. And I am honored to be part of this today. And I'm happy if I've touched you somewhere. And God bless you all. Have a great Sunday. So don't forget your me time. Have your me time and you can decide who you want in your me time. You can pick up your son and go for a me time as well. So define a definition for your me time. And I would look forward to people sending me messages, in fact with photographs. That ma'am, I did my me time and I'm so happy. So that's what I feel, if I've learnt something, I would love to share so that all of us feel good.
Okay, thank you so much ma'am. Uh divan hour didn't feel like one hour, it just went in a jiffy. And I hope and I know, I'm sure that everybody had a great time and we should all have more such conversations. So looking forward to the next session, real quick, this time it needs to come a little sooner.
Yeah, so see you next Sunday, same time, same place. Bye everyone.
Bye everyone, thank you for joining and thank you so much. Have a great Sunday.